Council President, go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to call the April 22nd, 2020 meeting of Long Branch City Council. Cut now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Viera.
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
And Mr. Dangler?
Here. We will now recite the Pledge Allegiance. The Pledge Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
Which is saying.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. I hereby certify that this meeting has been posted in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
And the presentations, we have none this evening. Reading and approval of the previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th, 2020 council meeting.
Mayor Jane.
Second, Ms. Viera.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
And Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance fourteen dash twenty entitled Ordinance of the City of Long Branch, Establishing a Five-Year Tax Exemption and Abatement Program for Improvements to Dwellings, Multiple Dwellings, Commercial and Industrial Structure Pursuant to the Five-Year Exempt- Exemption and Abatement Law, NJ S forty A, colon twenty dash one. The ordinance was introduced on February 12th, 2020. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If ever any member of the public has a comment to make regarding the ordinance only, please dial star nine on your phone. Any representative will call you by the last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record, and you will be given five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller with the last three digits of one nine eight, go ahead.
Vincent Lapore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Counsel, what is the minimum dollar threshold of an improvement eligible under this proposed five-year tax abatement program wherein the tax savings exceeds the administrative legal and county recording fees that will be borne by the applicant?
Answer is, is that it will abate up to twenty-five thousand dollars in, um, in added assessment. So there is.
Well, first of all, I asked the counsel, but I want the minimum. I don't want up to. What is the minimum?
There is no minimum.
There is no minimum dollar threshold?
No.
Okay. The ordinance essentially came about, and let's not play games on this, to deflect the tax abatement given to Ocean Cooper Development in ordinance thirteen twenty. You decided on a ten-year tax abatement for that development to figure out what you can do to appease the rest of the residents of this city. Essentially, Ocean Cooper with the ten-year got the cake, and the people of this city are getting the crumbs. I will read in this ordinance under one point eight A, a line, "In all cases, an applicant for an exemption pursuant to this section shall be responsible for all reasonable and actual costs incurred by the city in connection with granting of tax exemptions, including, but not limited to, reasonable legal fees incurred by the city." I'm going to repeat that. Reasonable legal fees incurred by the city and reasonable out-of-pocket third-party costs. If a thousand homeowners used a five-year program to make improvements to their properties, City Attorney Ray Nolan's law firm would draft a bill for a thousand abatement projects. Without the five-year program, a similar resident with improvements would only be dealing with construction and code and not the city law firm, notwithstanding the paperwork required from the homeowner, which may require that homeowner to hire an attorney as well. The city attorney's law firm is relatively new, four or five years. Most of its work has come from government, and this is another example of it in this city. The administrative fees and monies occurring to the city attorney will very likely exceed the tax savings additions contemplated by the homeowners. This ordinance is a win-win for the city attorney. It's just another example of the Palone team promoting the pay-to-play gravy train. And because you didn't do your homework, counsel, this program was done in Kingsburg, and it was also done in a section of Middletown. This program was phased out in both. It was not a highly successful program because, for the reasons I just stated, the residents figured it out. Therefore, I'm requesting a no vote on this ordinance by the record of Middletown, Kingsburg, and what I stated about the attorney fees in this ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion to close.
I'll move this, Sully.
Second, Dr. Vogt.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance fourteen twenty entitled Ordinance of the City of Long Branch, Establishing a Five-Year Tax Exemption and Abatement, Abatement Program for Improvements to Dwellings, Multiple Dwellings, Commercial and Industrial Structures Pursuant to the Five-Year Tax Exemption and Abatement Law, NJ SA forty twenty dash one. I need a motion to adopt the third in final reading advertised according to law. Roll call.
Council President, before the roll call, can I just, just in responding to the comment that was made, my, um, my anticipation is that other, other than the very simple tax abatement agreement, which is, I, I think essentially already prepared by my office, there won't be any legal fees incurred with each one of these. And I think that that's only with regards to the larger commercial properties, if there's something that's complicated about it. But the residential ones, I can tell you that a form will be given to the tax assessor. We're gonna fill in the names and the Latin blocks, and they'll, they'll all be the same, and it'd be a fairly routine and ministerial matter. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that if a thousand homeowners, and I hope a thousand homeowners do, do use this program because I think it's a good and useful program, there won't be thousands of dollars in legal fees. And I just, just want to make sure. I, I know things get exaggerated sometimes, but I just want to make sure we understand what we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Ray Nolan. Again.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
And Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, this is the first reading of ordinance sixteen dash twenty entitled Ordinance of the City of Long Branch, abandoning, releasing, extinguishing, and vacating the right, the right of, the right of the public to a certain city-owned right-of-way located off of Morel Street. I need a motion to introduce the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing for May thirteenth, 2020. Roll call, please.
So moved. First, Wittes.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
And Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Public portion. Public participation in resolution for all general comments, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved and need to vote.
Second, Councilman Viera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. If any member of the public has a comment to make, please dial star nine on your phone. A representative will call you by the last three digits of your phone number. When you are called upon, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and may only speak once.
Caller whose phone ends in one eight zero, go ahead.
This is Laura Tarlow at fifty-two Baruch Drive. Uh, thank you for taking my comments. I'd like to know if the town council can add to its agenda at the next meeting or shortly thereafter, an update on the financial impact of the virus that it's, and the closing down and shuttering in that it's having in terms of the town, the loss of revenues, where we stand, and the anticipated, um, tax changes as a result of that, the grants that you've been able to succeed in acquiring, uh, through the state or through the federal government would be greatly appreciated. I'd also appreciate at the next town council meeting or the one thereafter to provide us an update on the community pool. I know that the coastal review application has been, um, submitted and is under review for public comment. Uh, would like to know where we stand with that and also the financial budget associated uh, with the, uh, community pool as to what dollars may fall to the, uh, towns, um, either through membership fees or daily fees, or if, uh, five years down the road, you anticipate, uh, a tax increase as a result of the pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, this is Daniel Cole Hofford, one forty-nine Atlantic Avenue in Long Branch. I just have a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for the hard work they're doing. Um, I really appreciate your demeanor and your professionalism, and I appreciate all the hard work you're doing to support the people of Long Branch. I want to especially thank the mayor for taking time to speak with me in regards to this pool project. And, um, I think that although I do support the notion of a pool in Long Branch for the residents, uh, I have a hard time with the land use application of a, of a space that's green and open and available to the residents of Long Branch today, which would then have a hardscape on top of it with the pool. I hearken back to the debate thirty years ago or so when we faced a similar question about Jackson Woods, and recall that that was, um, actually what I believe led to the develop, the, uh, the set aside of that land, uh, which was important for the people of Long Branch and especially the people here in North Long Branch. What I would ask the council to do is to consider the land use master plan of the city. And so let's not, let's take a look at not losing green space for this development. I think that the pool is a great idea. There's a lot of wonderful reasons why we want to have a pool in Long Branch. But let's look outside the easy solution, and let's look at all the land that's available in town, and let's then make an intelligent decision, taking into consideration the amount of vacant space particularly adjacent to, uh, and near the, um, central core of the city. Um, changing topics, uh, there was a question raised at the last meeting about the fire department radios. And you know, I think it's, it's important, and obviously, uh, it was approved. What would be helpful, um, and maybe I missed in all the prep documents, is if the business administrator could lay out what, you got to six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you got there somehow. I know you didn't dream up the number. It probably came from bids or it came from proposals that you received from a number of, um, manufacturers, and maybe if you can lay that out in the documents prior to the meeting, that might, uh, help us to understand where the number comes from. It's a big number. It's needed. I support it, but it would be nice to have a little background on things like that. Okay? Um, the, uh, the last thing, I have a couple more notes. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go as fast as I can because of the balance of the time. Um, could we get the call-in information for the council meetings posted on the website? Because the website still says that the meetings are in City Hall, and we all know that they're really not. I mean, you might be there, but we can't be. So, uh, if you could, please post the, uh, the calling numbers uh, and the participant code on the website. I'd appreciate that. Um, and, uh, there was a question at the last meeting raised by a public participant about obtaining the names of the developers in the city that have open projects. Um, I realize that it's a matter of public record normally to obtain those, and that I understand also that developers typically are registered with the Department of State, and when they have an underlying business or an LLC. But right now with City Hall closed, uh, I don't know if someone can educate me as to the process of, um, of getting that information. That would be helpful. And finally, I, it just, you know, we all can have positive and negative opinions, but I do find that some of the discourse is a little disheartening, and, uh, I like to try to stay positive with the public comments as much as possible. Um, and I appreciate again the council and the mayor's support, uh, to make Long Branch a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you for letting me have a few moments. I, uh, I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Cole Hofford.
And, and Council President, the answer to the question is, the clerk's office is still open for email offer requests. So if you wanted to know about who the developer was, and that's generally information in the redevelopment agreements, you could always file an offer request with the clerk, clerk's office, and they respond to you electronically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Caller whose phone number ends in one nine eight, go ahead.
Vincent Lapore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. On the ordinance you just approved, I appeared before the planning board last evening by telephone, and, uh, that ordinance, and they wanted to, uh, do the preview section twenty-seven last night for the ordinance fourteen tonight. The dilemma you people have is the lack of transparency. You stated you would update the master plan, and that master plan would be updated starting in October of last year with public input. Here we are in April, there has been no public input, no movement on the master plan. You dealt that ordinance on a master plan that's ten years old. And let me tell you something, because you referenced an article in that ten-year-old master plan, you did not do justice to the people of this city until you waited until a new master plan was in place, which should be in place by now, and then you could have entertained whether the entire city would have been rehabilitation with public input. And by the way, Mr. Ray Nolan, you're governed by an addendum to the Design Guideline Booklets on redevelopment and rehabilitation zones in this city as a result of the Matulca and Lighthouse decisions by Monmouth County Superior Court. Unlike you, your other colleague on the planning board, the attorney, he didn't do his homework. You're not doing your homework either on all of this stuff. As far as ordinance sixteen twenty-six you're introducing, the city council believes it's in the best public interest by serving to abandon and releasing and extinguishing and vacating all public rights to this city right away. Who are you people? Who are you people? The right-of-way board is a board of education, a strip mall, a furniture store, and a funeral home. Little more than a year ago, there was a major crime scene across the street from the board of that building. And that right-of-way was used by pedestrians, access, and deliveries. You came out with this ordinance on an agenda last Thursday. John Palone visited the owner of the furniture store and the strip mall last Thursday, not even letting him know that this ordinance had come out and would affect him. If you look at the codes upon which it's done, okay, you can introduce this tonight and pass it. However, okay, what's gonna happen is the owner gets notified after tonight. However, the owner of the strip mall and the furniture store happens to be a tenant of the mayor, and the mayor never informed him of anything. You talk about backstabbing. You really talk about backstabbing. And Palone, let's get the real story about this alleyway. Your brother, the congressman, has a building he's renting from for his congressional office. And who owns that building? Bogliaggi Funeral Home. And who's the petitioner to vacate this alleyway? Bogliaggi Funeral Home. They have another property adjacent to that building on Morel, and you live a few doors down. You being in that area, living in that vicinity, Palone, are well aware of what's taking place on this, and yet you never told the owner of the furniture store, the strip mall, or the liquor store renter.
Mr. Lapore, you're one minute.
Being the same person. You never told them once what was coming. Really low, Palone. Really low. So what we've got here is we've got a loaded gun, okay? The administration's lack of transparency continues. And then, Mr. Palone, under your administration and under Schneider's administration, which you were a part of, why did you allow the Willie Bogliaggi Funeral Home to pave over the city accessway? And install a bump, and then block the access with flowerpots from time to time? You live right in that neighborhood, Mr. Palone. This is delinquency on your part, Mr. Palone. There's a lot more going on on this. Five oh five Broadway I caught you on five years ago on a deal to move the Economic Development Office of the city. So you could place the mortgage. Palone, you're playing dirty. As I caught you then, I'll catch you now. You're dirty.
Thank you.
Caller whose phone number ends in one eight zero, go ahead.
Yes, hi, uh, good evening. This is Jeff Tarlow, and I live at fifty-two Baruch Drive. And first I would like to, uh, extend my, my good wishes and hopes that, uh, every, everyone on the council and their families are surviving this pandemic, uh, uh, well and in good spirits. I'd also like to echo the sentiments of the previous caller, uh, before this last one, uh, the gentleman on Atlantic Avenue, um, uh, and also express my thanks to, uh, all the, all the hardworking members of the, of the town council and the mayor for all they do to improve Long Branch. And, and, uh, I'd lastly like to echo the sentiments of that gentleman, uh, from Atlantic Avenue in the sense that there appears not to be an abundance of green space in Long Branch. And I would encourage and, and hope that the town council and, and, and the mayor would look at alternative sites for this pool complex, which would not approach upon the, uh, limited green space, uh, in, in Long Branch. I, I do believe there are better locations for this community pool, which I do support. Uh, but I would, I would definitely encourage you to, uh, look at all alternate sites for this. Uh, with that, I'll just say good night and hope everybody stays well. And, uh, thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council President, looks like we have no more callers.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Oi. Second, Councilman Viera.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So moved. Resolutions, we can take the list of resolutions as a consent agenda? Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second, I need to vote.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
And Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Under applications, we have none. Dissonaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening, and thanks for participating. I'd like to thank all the callers I called in today. They show interest in the city of Long Branch. It's very important. And I'd also like to thank all, um, all, uh, healthcare workers and our police department that are doing a great job, uh, public workers and the fire department. And I'd like to thank the people of Long Branch itself. They're, uh, practicing social distance. I do a little walking on the beach every now and then, and I do a lot of walking on the sidewalks now. And I do, everybody see, everybody respecting the social distance. So I want to thank the people of Long Branch. And one of that, I want to thank everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Uh, so I want to thank several of the speakers tonight, um, for your very thoughtful and well-considered comments. Um, it's, that's the type of, of feedback, uh, and, and thoughtfulness that, uh, is so important for everything moving forward. So particularly, it was particularly evident tonight with several of, several of the comments. Um, but last time, I think, uh, you know, we were all so impressed and continue to be so impressed with the healthcare workers. And as we, you know, as time marches on and we become more accustomed to this way of life, uh, it's just so encouraging to see so many people step up and be leaders and be heroes in this, uh, whole process. Uh, you, you know, you could name, it, it would be wonderful if somehow we could get a list of the people who are just, um, stepping up far, far and above. Um, read things like, uh, one of the owners of a car washing company that is willing to disinfect the cars of, uh, healthcare workers. You have, you know, Jackie who does the, the, uh, give the, give the, give, give kids a dream, doing tutoring, everything, you know, over and above the usual they do. The list could go on and on. So in addition to be so thankful for the wonderful, um, healthcare workers, I also want to recognize so many of the people who are going above and beyond to just, um, make sure that Long Branch comes back stronger than ever. So stay well until the next time we talk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wittes?
Good evening. I too would like to thank everyone for their comments this evening. And I'd also like to extend my prayers and best wishes to everyone who's gone through such a difficult time right now. And, uh, if there's anything that we can do as a council, please feel free to reach out to us. And, uh, I wish everyone good health, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sully?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm very thankful for all the people in the medical field who have helped everyone, everyone, and I mean everyone. It isn't only the healthcare workers, it's the police department, it's the public works. It's everyone in the city. And my comment would be to the residents of Long Branch, thank you for paying attention to some of the rules that have been, uh, stepped. Very important to social things. And to say, uh, as, stay, and stay healthy, thank you all so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Palone?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I too would like to thank all, everyone for their comments this evening and to all the volunteers and those who have donated, uh, you know, in this very difficult time. It's really, um, truly inspiring. So I just want to mirror what everybody said and, and, and thank you. Um, I want to add that last Friday, we hosted a live town hall, uh, virtual meeting with myself, council president, Dangler, city attorney, city administrator, health department, police chief, OEM, and DPW, uh, all answered resident questions that were sent in regarding coronavirus. Uh, it is available for viewing at any time on our YouTube page, website, and our social media, media. And if you were not able, uh, to ask a question for this town hall but would still like to, uh, please, uh, email us at covid nineteen questions at longbranch.org, and we'll get your question answered. We also will hope to bring you some video updates, uh, as we go along with this as well. I also just wanted to give you a quick update regarding a couple of things that are going on in Long Branch. Uh, you know, the, uh, the agreement with the Bank of America to donate the bank building. Uh, you know, the, uh, the agreement with the Bank of America to donate the bank building on Broadway has been formally signed. Uh, you may know last, uh, meeting, the Long Branch Public Library is applying for a grant, which the city will match to build a brand-new extension to the library that includes a community center and resource center. Uh, we're excited and hopeful, uh, about that possibility. And, um, if the Taconacy Bridge renovations are underway, and they should be completed very shortly, and, and it looks great. So as always, we continue to give our residents the most up-to-date information regarding the coronavirus in Long Branch. So please check our website at longbranch.org or social media for our frequent, uh, daily updates. And for those of the, uh, in the business community who might be listening, I'd also like to recommend that if you have any questions about loans or grants or just business questions in general, uh, we've put together, uh, several programs, have a lot of guidebooks, uh, and are working with, um, uh, the library on a back-to-business program, uh, which should get underway shortly as well. So please, uh, give us, give the, um, uh, Office of Community Development a call anytime. I believe the number is seven three two five seven one, uh, two oh four zero. Um, and again, finally, just thank you all and be well and be safe, and we all hope to see all of you soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to echo what, uh, everyone has said already in regards to being appreciative of the first responders, uh, whoever they may be, whether they're the, the doctors, the nurses, um, the police department, fire department, uh, first aid, and certainly, uh, the Department of, uh, Public Works. Um, you don't really think about the different jobs that people have and how important they are until we, we, we have things like this going on. Um, so I just want to just, uh, thank them and let them know that we appreciate everything that they're doing collectively. And as I said at the town hall meeting, uh, on, on last Friday, uh, this is something that we, we collectively can, uh, solve. We can be, all be a part. We all play an equal part. Um, again, the, the, the doctors and experts can only give us advice. We have the, the lion's share of stopping this, uh, this pandemic that we're going through so we can get back to some type of normalcy. So when the weather changes, and it will hopefully at some point in the next couple of weeks, please don't get lax and, uh, just start hanging out with, with, with your friends. Uh, we still need social distance. We still need our masks. We still need our gloves. And with that being said, thank you very much. Be safe. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Councilman Viera.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Right.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.